No gavel. Good evening, everyone. This is the special committee of the whole meeting. Our goal-setting session, January 24, 2018. I'd like to call upon deputy city clerk Shelley Gerzic to call the role of the council. Our city clerk, Sue Herman, is unable to be with us tonight. Role call, please.
Jacobson. Fenuken.
Here.
Markwart.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor. Smith.
Here.
Six present.
I've not heard from Alderman Jacobson. I would expect him to toddle in here in a few minutes. The effort to put together a meeting like this where we could get as full participation from our city council has been a major task. We thought we had a meeting where everyone could attend. Unfortunately, Tony Favor, our seventh ward alderman, had employment obligations that he simply had to take care of. We fully understand that, and so Tony will not be with us tonight. We'll do our darkest as city council and staff to share with Tony after he listens to the audio recording that is being provided tonight. I'd like to make a couple of comments, if I may, before we get on to the main consideration this evening, and that is our goal-setting session. It's apparent that we have many in this community who are so involved, who are so interested in the welfare of our community, and they want to be as helpful as possible as we, as the seven aldermen in the city of DeKalb and this mayor, move forward in making this a more livable, better community. As I said during the State of the City address on Monday night, we were elected to serve the people of DeKalb. And I know this group of people with whom I've worked in the short eight months I've been mayor to be the kind of folks who really want to be representative of their wards and of this city as a whole. Having said that, there, as I alluded to on Monday night, one of my frustrations as your mayor has been, and this is a microcosm of one of those frustrations, and that is meeting sites. So what I want the council to do is to be aware that I've asked Anne Marie Gora, our city manager, to either include on a special cowl, or perhaps we should devote an entire cowl, on meeting logistics. Where do we hold meetings? When do we hold meetings? What meetings do we audio record? What meetings do we video record? Does it make sense to have meetings like this here as opposed to the city council chambers? As I engaged Carol Zar, who's going to be our facilitator tonight, I've worked with Carol before in the past where she's conducted strategy sessions, goal-setting sessions, strategic planning sessions, much like we're going to have tonight, and we found that in many instances it was better to get a group around the table like this to more intimately look at each other, discuss items. Now, having said that, we all know that this is a public meeting. This is an open meetings act. I love what the open meetings act allows us to do, but when we do that, we also run into the very realities, if you will, of wanting to do and wanting to share with the public what we should be sharing with that public. So, having said that, we're going to talk about meeting logistics one of these weeks, one of these months with cowl. Our main consideration tonight is goal-setting session. I met Carol Zar many years ago. Carol and her husband Jerry are both natives of Chicago. Carol has her bachelor's in political science from the University of Illinois, her master's of public administration from NIU here. Carol has been very active in a number of organizations within the city. Currently, she is on the board of the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District, i.e. the old sanitary district. Carol's been very involved with lifelong learning at Northern, and as I say, I've been involved in a couple of strategic planning sessions that didn't fall under the purveyance of open meetings, and as a result, we were perhaps a little bit more conversational than we might be tonight, although I hope we are tonight. Carol has over 25 years' experience with the Center for Governmental Studies at NIU. She is an expert. She's considered an expert across the state in local government, and Carol, it's a delight to have you tonight. I'm going to turn it over to you real quickly, and I'm going to try to keep my mouth shut As far as the lay of the land, what we'd like to do is to spend the next couple of hours or so with goal-setting, and Carol will lead us through that exercise. We do fully intend to have public participation. That we will conduct at the end of the meeting. So again, as is the case with most of our meetings, if you do have a particular wish to speak, we know it's going to be on our goal-setting sessions as censy only consideration tonight. Please fill out a speaker request form and give it to Shelley, and we'll make sure that we get you on, because we certainly do want to hear your comments, and I think some of your comments may very well be generated by what we do tonight. Who knows? So I'd like to introduce everybody around the table. I introduce Shelley Gerzic, our deputy city clerk. Our first ward alderman is not here yet, Dave Jacobson. I fully expect him to -- I fully expect Dave to be here. Dave's our first ward alderman, our second ward alderman, Bill Fenuken, third ward alderman, Mike Markwart, fourth ward alderman, Pat Fagan, fifth ward alderman, Kate Noriko. Our sixth ward alderman is Mike Verbic, and again, we're sorry that Tony Favor is not able to join us tonight. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Carol Zar, who will be our facilitator and our host for the remainder of the evening. Carol?
Okay, thank you, Jerry. It's a pleasure to be here. I've done this with the city council, not the city council, but the city of DeKalb's council, a number of times over my 25, 30 years here in doing this kind of work. I've done many of these with many different city councils, village boards, all over the state of Illinois. As the executive director of the Illinois City County Management Association for 20 years, I had the opportunity to participate in lots of different municipalities around the state and kind of see how things operate. This kind of session traditionally has been done off-site. The purpose of that was to provide an opportunity for councils to come down off the dais, to be able to see each other and have a more conversational kind of interaction than you normally can in a city council setting. No votes are taken tonight. No policy is made tonight. It's an opportunity for you to get your personal views of the direction of the city out for your colleagues to see. Only the aldermen and the mayor will be participating. The city manager is here to answer specific questions, if you have one, but she will not be a participant in what goes on this evening, and the audience will not be participants in this part of what goes on this evening either. This is going to be a little non-traditional. If you've participated in other goal-setting sessions, this is a little different. I chose this particular way of doing things because it's an evening. This is going to give you an opportunity to get up, move around, not be stuck in your seats, and maybe get the juices that maybe have slowed down as we come to the end of the afternoon moving again. So with that said, let me explain how we're going to move forward. Each of you has at your seat a pile of Post-it notes, and you have a marker. The first thing we're going to do, we're going to do this in two rounds. Round one, we're going to talk about what you want to accomplish in the next 12 to 18 months, which is basically the life of this particular council before you have a new election and some of you may be replaced or not. What I want you to do is to take those Post-it notes and write one single thing on each Post-it note of what you want to accomplish. Now, you can write 20 of them if you want, but one idea per note, and it has to be specific. You can't say, "Improve economic development." That's too broad. I need specifics, how, if that's what you want to do. Yes, sir?
On some of the homework that we were to do, we were asked to take those one-year-to-18-month goals, if you will, or things we thought we could accomplish, broken down into the five arenas out of the 2025 strategic plan. So for example, I've got enough information here to talk about for two days. So should I take one for Sense a Place, one for Downtown Vitality?
No, 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 absolutely not.
Okay, good.
You need to be much more specific than that. So you probably have more than five ideas, one for each area.
Oh, right, but these are, for example, yeah.
So each idea, no matter what category it is in, and it doesn't have to be in any one of those.
It doesn't have to be in one of those.
Doesn't have to be in those five categories. It can be in something entirely different if you want it to be. Just write them down, and when you've written down as many as you want, then you get up and you slap them up on the wall, and then after that, I'll tell you what to do next. Okay?
How specific do you want us to be?
Okay. If you want to improve 20 miles of bad streets, that's specific.
Gotcha.
So I don't want to hear, "I want to improve," "I want to fix all the streets in the city." What specifically do you want to do? And write them down and stick them up on the wall.
This was great. I really enjoyed doing this.
And please write legibly, because I'm going to have to transcribe all this stuff.
You're asking a lot.
Yeah.
If I spell phonetically, that'll be fine, right?
You can spell phonetically. I have a son who thinks that it, when in doubt, sounded out, even though we know that doesn't work in English.
I don't think there's going to be enough Post-its here. If somebody said, "Who's going to have more ideas than anybody else?" I'd probably say Jacobson.
And really, don't feel constrained to use those five areas if you don't want to.
This is going to make for great TV here, Lynn, as we fill these out. I'm going to put a few up, Carol.
Please. Hey, you can put some up and then go back and write some more, whatever.
I will do that, but again, we're going to have quite a few up there, I'm sure.
That's fine.
I love this.
I can't spell all of a sudden.
Don't worry about spelling. We can sound it out.
Someone borrow my computer to check spell check?
No, I was just running out of space.
They don't have to be in any order up there. Just slap them up.
These aren't.
Okay, just slap them up there.
These aren't.
Jerry started yesterday on this.
What's that?
Well, Jerry has the advantage that he's done this kind of exercise with me once before, so when I was describing it, he had in his head how this works.
I'll put some of these up now.
Yeah.
He wanted to.
Absolutely.
They do initial those?
No.
Got to keep we mayors in shape, right, Jesse?
Shoo.
Shoo.
Scrubby hands and my nuts.
I lost my top.
Oh, here.
Lots of good ideas coming up out there.
I hope they're good.
If you write the word over here, right?
Give some more M and Ms. It'll make me happy.
I had a problem that wasn't working on my guy. It was very heavy. Because it worked out simpler than I used to have to do.
I had something a little about.
We got VoIP. It's over internet phone.
Oh, yeah, we got that.
Yeah, still figuring out.
Once you get used to it. Yeah, once you get used to it, because your computer's, for example, if anybody else is on the phone.
Now, remember, these are all things you want to do in the next 12 to 18 months. So longer-term ones, save for later.
What if they were what you wanted to do in the last 12 to 18? Does that count?
Well, we can, don't worry. We can save it for later.
We're good.
We're good.
I am on a roll. I'm missing.
I'm on my seat.
That's right. How you doing?
See, I'm so good.
My mouth's.
Is she down in Arizona?
Are you still writing, Dave?
I mean, I can continue all night, so.
No, we don't want to do that.
I've got to cap this just to get this.
I haven't even pulled up my list of 50 things I've already sent to the mayor.
In the next 12 months, 18 months.
Yeah, I'll got to come sometime, right? I'll stick with what I got after this all. You know what?
I'm going to list everything I can think of.
If we took all these, they're just ideas. They're just from this group of city council. Put them on our city website. Let people see what we.
Just wait. You're getting way ahead of yourself. Just wait. Because I wouldn't be surprised if there are some duplicates and triplicates up there, okay?
I'm almost done.
You could use my wife's Tyranid, or Verbiage. Zip it.
Eat or talk amongst yourselves.
We're watching you.
I was on the radio the other day, and I told TD's Eye, and I said, "I'm so blessed. My mother's going to be 99 years old on February 14th. She lives in Dixon. Going to go over and see her. She's still as sharp as a tack, and people say she's the only one who can out-talk me." So God bless her.
I love who you are.
Yeah, very fortunate, in so many ways.
While you're doing?
Are you reading a book over there?
They asked us for ideas.
Every once in a while, I'll charge a fat one.
Okay, this is the last one. Even though I had more ideas. If you wonder what comes from my drinking wine.
Well, you mentioned if you had a glass of wine, I'm pretty.
I've seen it. I've been there. I've been there.
Remember what happens in Chicago? Okay, here.
All right, stick it up there.
Okay, oh, yeah. I can put at least one of mine up.
Okay, so now, get yourselves up to that wall and organize them. No talking. Everybody, look at them all, put them into categories that you see, and if you disagree with somebody, you take that and you move it, but no talking. After we're all done, then we'll talk. Right now, just move them around. Move them around into common threads. So if it's all about transportation, put them in it.
So if it's all, if a couple of them are back, Husky Bus Line merger, put those.
Put them together. Put them together, and I'll get out of your way.
Shh, no talking, cheater.
No talking. Not that. It looks like these are permanent markers, so let's not get them on the wall. Just write down the post-it note. When the university opened its brand-new facility in Naperville, and they had the nice... And I went out there. It was like the second week it was open to do something like this. And I used a permanent marker and wrote down the wall. Carol was here. That's right. Put them in some kind of a...so that I can see where there are groups. When you think you're happy with the way things are organized, you can sit down. Or you can sit down and then go back up and look at it, and rearrange things. So, it looks like we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Okay, all right. Now, we're going to get down to talking. All right, looks to me like this is one group. Roll-out VAC, Husky Line service. Improve public transportation with community. Have a transportation summit, a transportation center. Downtown bus service from NIU and Pleasant Street. Am I...if I'm not reading it right, if you wrote it, correct me. Install electric car charging stations. Okay, so, do we agree that these all kinds of seem to fit together? Okay, what do you...what do you call this? What is this about?
Getting around.
Transportation.
Getting around transportation. I can't write on the board, so I'm going to have to...
I was going to say, just make sure you use dry erase. They're trying to write on the board.
Oh, I have a head, Carol. Okay.
Carol.
This one's special about...
There are dry erase markers in the pen and pencil cup if you wanted to.
Thank you. That'll be...that'll make it easier.
Can everybody hear Carol okay?
Yeah, can you hear me?
If you can't, we definitely want to make sure that you can. Okay, thank you. Because I have a mic.
I have a pretty loud voice, I've been told. Special events calendar, food and wine trail, more festivals. Explore feasibility of reinventing farmer's market year-round. Construct wayfinding signage. Develop outreach and marketing strategy to accentuate DeKalb's positives. One-time something outreach.
One time per month.
One time per month. Okay. Oh, okay, got it. Community conversation series. Arts corridor finalized. Schedule university events downtown. Bike access...Bike Across DeKalb event. Increase tourism in downtown. Grand opening of Cornerstone and Plaza DeKalb. Offer gardening tutorial with community gardens. Stagger times of beloved community dinners. Work with ramp on key public spaces that need revision of...
At least two.
At least two that need revision of handicapped parking. Enforce handicap parking ordinance and places. Okay, do you feel like these all fit together?
Yeah.
Okay, what doesn't fit?
Wayfinding signage with staggering times of beloved community dinner. Example.
Right.
They don't seem to be...
I think the major...the major theme I'm seeing here is festivals slash events. In which case, the wayfinding signage probably doesn't fit.
Should go with transportation.
Should go with transportation. I agree.
As should the handicap parking.
And the parking thing should go with transportation. So, what do we want to call this?
Community...
Amenities and the arts.
Amenity in the arts.
Special events.
Community special events, yeah.
Yeah, community special events.
Did you say you can write on that wall?
With this pen, I can.
Okay, good.
It's a different pen, Jerry. Okay.
Mother, I'd rather do it myself.
Add city board commissions...add to city board commissions at least one person of color and millennial. Define core services, full-time clerk. Oh, now I know what cow means, committee of the home. Okay, on meeting logistics, I wonder who put that up. Cultural competency training for city residents. Explore grant opportunities. Attract multi-disciplined staff in order to de-specialize the operation. What's the...what's the theme here?
The city personnel.
Well, personnel in its broadest sense, because it's got the boards and commissions there too.
How much is just city ops? City ops.
City and...
City operations.
City op...okay, I think that covers it. City operations? Heads nodding? Heads nodding. Okay. These two are all fine by themselves. Airport self-sufficient airport strategy meeting.
It could be with transportation.
Could be under transportation, I would think. Or under city operations, too. Or city operations.
Your choice, not mine.
City operations.
Yeah.
Goal-setting on reduction of crime. Attack crime head-on and reduce known criminal influences. Be more proactive in reducing crime.
Emergency operations planning.
Thank you.
It's not my writing, but I can read it.
Emerg...yes. Reduce crime by 25 percent. Reduce crime by 10 percent. Cameras installed downtown. Decrease violent crime. So, we're talking about...
Crime.
Crime.
Well, and the emergency operation should be under city operations. The...that was mine, emergency operations center. We need to continue to plan for that. And that isn't necessarily crime-related. It's more, what do they call it? Like tornadoes and... Crisis management. Yeah, crisis management.
Okay, that's all crime. This is a big group. Now, when...as we go through this, you may...as I'm reading these out, you might say, "Yeah, you know, maybe we ought to divide this up." Whatever. Incentive for downtown...
Business.
Business. More business thinking by city. Increase efforts to draw business to East and West Lincoln Highway and South Fourth. Investigate potential for downtown hotel. Pursue development of sports complex, outdoor sports facility. Grow living wage jobs by 15 percent. Create business-friendly municipal code and unified development ordinance. Think outside the box in terms of growth and rooftops. Identify retail use for at least one building contiguous to airport. Conduct feasibility study with NIU for research park. Farmer's Market 2...
Annie Glidden North.
Annie Glidden North, thank you. Use vacant retail space for pop-up stores. Reduce commercial vacancies by 25 percent. 20 new houses built. Any building or property reused. Residential rehab program. Resolve former bragged property future. Attack known blight head-on. Issue permits for 10 new homes built at $200,000 or more. Market utilize locust and first property. Institute rooming house conversion program. Install at least one new retail space, South Fourth Street Corridor. Research feasibility of Small Business Development Center. Research the feasibility. Increase business activity on South Fourth. Study lighting needs in the Pissful Lighting Ward. Focus on areas outside of downtown. Well, in my considered opinion, there's more than one theme here.
Annie Glidden, Farmer's Market, you probably should go under the community special events.
Okay. Wait.
Yep.
Okay. Seems to me we've got business and housing.
Yeah, housing.
Can we separate...can we separate those? So... So, this is institute rooming house conversion. Issue permits for 10 new housing.
Study the lighting needs in the North Piss, because that's primarily residential area.
Light. Attack light head-on. Is that residential or business, or both?
Both.
Both.
Okay. Residential rehab program. 20 new house builds. Think outside the box in terms of growth and rooftops. I would say that goes with residential. I'm trying to remember how...resolve the former bragged property future.
That's again up in Annie Glidden North.
Right. Where does that go? Let's put it over here for now, and then figure out where we want to put it. Move it off to the side. So, this is all...what is it called?
Commercial property?
Economic development.
Let's make something...
Economic development, I think.
Economic development, I think.
Economic development? Okay, then this is, then this becomes housing develop, or residential develop. Okay, then over here we have improved, I love this. Says improve communications with NIU. The reason I'm smiling, I've been doing this for 30 years, 40 years, oh my God. I would have been shocked if there wasn't one thing about communications that came up. I've never done any of these where there hasn't been an issue dealing with communications because we never think we're doing enough of it. Assist with NIU enrollment. Then we just have Annie Glidden North is AGN question mark, right? That's Annie Glidden North. Concentrate on the future of Greek Rome. So what's that?
University?
Yeah, university related or-
University relations, university-
University area.
Well, it's more than just the area. I mean, if you assist with NIU enrollment. Relationship with, communication with. Help me out here, folks, it's yours, not mine.
I know.
Relationship with.
University.
University.
Do I have to?
Cowbell buzzed, man.
Just put, hey, Carol, just put up NIU. Just put up NIU and, and we'll know that that's NIU-related.
Okay.
And then again, that would probably be a place for the fragged property to come down into because it is part of the Annie Glidden North.
Okay.
That's right, I, it is, definitely.
Okay. All right. Okay. Here we have. Notiff transfer to general fund. Have administration work on increasing-
Revenue.
Revenue without increase of taxes. Support social service agencies. Be able to see a return on investments. Address and implement comprehensive fleet program. Update aging fleet.
City fleet.
Same thing.
Fleet to streets, yeah.
Have a time plan, years to be back where we were 15 years, years ago, roads. So you're talking about roads here. Okay.
Would that be under transportation?
Put it under transportation.
Or city operations.
Yeah, city operations.
City operations?
And almost everything you've read so far there-
You could put, you could put the fleet under operations too, could you not?
Yes, in fact, almost everything she's read there has gone under, could go under city operations.
Well, you-
Yeah, I think it's, most of those there are budget items.
Right.
Where city operations is more structure items.
Right, I don't think you would combine all those.
All right.
I think they're, they could fall under city operations, but they're all very much budget-related.
Pursue taxpayer refund from the library. I think they're going to be talking about that later tonight from what I understand. Contain growth in expenses within growth of existing revenue. Lower or freeze re-taxes. Lower city energy costs. Reduce operating cost to those within our means. Budget for staff salary increases in FY19. Address and implement long-term road funding. Increase effectiveness and efficiency with technology. That I think can go under city operations. Reduce costs without reducing service. Review fee structure. Define realistic in what we can afford pay scales. Be given more detail during budget process. Focus on support, supporting existing business. Can I move that to economic development? Address and implement long-term road funding. I think I've got the whole.
Budget or finances.
I'm sorry?
Budget and finance, that whole area.
This whole area is budget and finance.
Don't you think so, Mike?
It's going to entertain moving airport self-sufficiency over to budget. Does that make sense or is it truly?
I think that'd be operation.
Operations.
So you got, you got eight areas here. But there's quite a bit of overlap on the individual things. So one of the things that I will be, that I will do in writing this up is I will try to, within these areas, group the things that are similar or go together. You'll still see it all, but I'll try to group it for you so that it's more easy to work with. Okay? All right, but now the trick is, that's a lot to try to do in 12 months, folks. 12 to 18 months. So the next thing that we can do is we need to talk about which of these things are simple to accomplish and which of them are complex. Here's the definition. Simple are those things that you with staff can do without any other involvement by outside groups, consultants, or anything else. It's simple because it can be handled internally. Complex means you need to work with other governmental bodies, with other not-for-profits, with other consultants, whatever. So which of these things are simple? And we can then, we'll, we'll move them around within the group. Which are simple and which are complex? So that's the next, the next piece of this puzzle. All right, here we've got one, which is obviously complex because it says improve public transportation within the community. Now that isn't, that isn't something you can do all by yourself, right?
It's almost too general too.
And it's almost too general. So there are probably other things that fit under there. On the other hand, enforce handicap parking ordinance. That's simple. Doesn't take anybody else.
Absolutely.
So those are really, those are two really good examples of what I mean by simple and complex. Okay? So I'm going to now rearrange these. So this is, now let's do, oh, we can, complex and simple. Transportation summit. That's probably complex because you're going to have to get other people involved in this as is a transportation center. Rollout back Husky bus line service.
Very complex.
Very complex.
Even though it is underway, so.
But something that's going to happen within the next 12 days.
It is.
You think?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Well, if you're that sure of it.
Bill, aren't we sure?
I don't know if it qualifies as simple just because it's not-
No, no, it's going to happen in the next 18 months, but it's still complex.
Yeah, it's still complex.
Because of the number of parties involved, but with DSAS and everybody else that's been working on it, we're so far along now.
Downtown bus service from NIU and Pleasant Street. I'm guessing you mean the, is that part of this?
It will be, yes.
It could be, yes.
Install electric car charging stations.
That's not something the city can do on their own.
I'm not, and I need, what do you mean by construct wayfinding signage, whoever this one is?
I did that. Our community enhancement commission now is working with Northern on getting signs that are downtown that say, you know, Van Buren Plaza is this way and the Egyptian Theater is this way and making it easier for folks who are biking or walking to find places.
So that's simple.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's simple. I think they're working on it now from what I understand.
Work with Ramp on key public spaces, at least two that need revision of handicap parking. By definition, it's complex because you're using, you're talking about, okay. So I'm going to put. Kind of put these all together. All right. Special events calendar. More food and wine trail.
Carol, I have a question. Was the person who set up special events calendar, were they thinking of that in terms of the city's website?
I don't know.
What was the question, Kate?
The special events calendar. Was that yours?
Yes.
Oh, were you thinking of that in terms of the city's website?
I think it'd probably be more complex in the, in the, in the sense that I wish we could have a, a special events calendar that would encompass special events throughout the community.
Oh.
They might be university, they might be Chamber of Commerce, they might be, you know.
You know how many years we've been talking about that? I'm going to put that under complex, guys.
It's complex, but it's-
I've been talking, this, that's been talked about in this community for as long as I can remember.
Yes.
Yeah.
Not that you shouldn't try to do it, I'm not trying to discourage you, it's just something that's been around. It's really, it is really complex.
But on the face of it, it seems like, well.
Right, on the face of it, it seems like it should be, oh, that's a simple thing to do. It's not.
Have people, have one person.
Now we're doing complex on this side and then simple on the other. And we got anything on here that's simple?
Yes, arts corridor finalized. We've talked and talked and talked about that and all we have to do now is make sure that, hey, this is the corridor, this is what we have to do. And we can do that within the 12 or 18 months. Now, there are other organizations involved in that, so if that makes it complex, it's still complex too. But I think, you know, we could, we've been tap dancing around that thing for the last year, year and a half.
What about the food and wine trail?
Complex.
Explore feasibility of reinventing farmers market year-round.
That'd be simple. Do you think that'd be complex?
Yeah, I would because, you know, while the city's a part of the chamber actually runs it and then you'd have to find a place to have it inside.
Indoor.
Indoor. You know, for six months out of the year, seven months out of the year. So that makes it a little more complex than a simple thing that we can do ourselves, I think.
You can't find an empty building?
If it's empty, it's empty for a reason.
Well, it was my idea on the moving farmers markets to Annie Glidden North, and that wasn't a permanent thing, but I think, you know, we talk about accessibility of food. We talk about fresh food for a neighborhood. Why shouldn't we explore moving at least maybe periodically a farmer's market to that neighborhood?
Yeah, that'd be simple though.
Well, it's simple enough in the sense that, that we could do it, but you're dealing with different vendors and all that, but I think it could be done. And it would be doing the right thing. It would be doing something that makes sense for our community.
Nine twelve Edgbrook.
Yeah.
Nine twelve Edgbrook.
Okay, grand opening of Cornerstone and Plaza DeKalb.
That'd be simple.
That should be simple.
That's simple.
I want something in the simple category. More festivals, obviously complex. Stagger times of the beloved community dinners. That's not really a city function at all, is it?
No, not in our purview.
The only reason I put that up there, and that's mine, is the fact that I looked at the street, the 2025 strategic plan and it specifically mentioned the beloved community dinner and the fact that at that point, the city council or, or folks felt that that was an important enough event for the city to get involved in. And the problem with beloved community, and I've gone to about five of them, is the fact that they're always on Sunday nights. For me personally, Sunday nights is not a good night, so, and again, you'd have to talk to Beth and Joe and others who do this, but maybe have them on a Sunday night, but then once in a while have them on a Friday night or a, you know, or a Saturday noon or something like that. So that's what I put stagger the times.
Okay, but my question-
But it isn't a city thing, I agree.
That, okay, that's, I think it, this, it's really not a city thing. It's something that you can talk to the other group about and see if they're, but it isn't, it's not city business.
Yeah.
Sorry, Jerry.
Well, even though it wasn't the 2025 strategic plan.
Took you off the board.
That took me off the board.
Just because it was done with the NIU Center for Governmental Studies where I was no longer working at that time, doesn't mean it's correct. Bike ex, bike across DeKalb event. That's something new, isn't it?
Well, that was mine too. I, I think we have so many good biking organizations, Kishwaki Kalanis and all that. We have been working on the extension of the bike trail. It would be nice to plan an event where people, families could bike around DeKalb or walk around DeKalb on the, what are we calling it, the bike trail?
The pathways.
The, the pathway, yeah. I'd love to see it.
That's something you could do.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think so. Develop outreach marketing strategy to accentuate DeKalb's positive one-time-per-month outreach. I need more, what does that mean, please?
Oh, yes, sorry. Well, we were talking about the need, the need to showcase DeKalb's positives. And the one-time per month is ensuring that at least once, once a month there was an article in the paper or a sign or social media outreach. But it needs somebody to figure out, to be assigned to do it.
Right.
But, yeah, it could certainly be assigned to someone within the city.
Commu-, okay, well, we, community conversation series.
That's my- And again, it would take collaboration with another group, but, you know, I'd like to see some, some special meetings, if you will, geared around conversations that encompass a number of different groups in our community. The handicap, diversity.
Here's what I'm going to do with that.
I don't know.
I'm going to put this over in the simple category because all it takes is for you to call a meeting. Identify some people you think would make for a good conversation and set it up. Identify some people you think would make for a good conversation, and set it up. It's simple, you should be able to do that in the next year.
With city council approval, you mean?
Of course with city council approval, but I, do you see where I'm going with that?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, you wanna invite other people in, but it's something that, as a city, you can institute, you don't need anybody's help.
We need to be more responsive, we need to be more transparent, we need to be, you know, a sounding board for those who many times aren't able to make their views as known, and that's what I would think the community conversation series might do.
I'm gonna put that in the simple category, because I think that, that's something you could accomplish as a city council.
I hope so. Mike?
They could be joint meetings with other governing bodies.
Good.
We could decide, we talked about getting more youth involved, we could put out an, an opportunity for two high school students, for example, to be involved in the, in the council, or just work alongside council, we could extend that same opportunity to.
The old, the old fashioned, be a mayor for a day, or be a councilman for a day, or for, you know, follow Jerry around.
Didn't we have a youth summit in this community some time ago, or?
I'm thinking more regular involvement with, with youth and council.
So I'm putting that in the simple category, I think that's something you could get accomplished. All the rest of them, I think, are a little more complex. All right, city operations. A full-time clerk is gonna require a referendum.
No.
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 No, but it's still complex. It was changed from full-time to part-time by council action, I think it could be reversed that way too.
Okay. Okay.
So, but it's still complex because of the timeline that's necessary to accomplish that. It's still simple, you think?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
Do his vote.
Add to city board commission at least one person of color or millennial.
Simple.
Could do that.
Attract multidisciplined staff in order to despecialize the operation. Let me tell you, that's complex. It really is. Committee of the whole on meeting logistics, simple, you just need to call the meeting. Emergency operations center planning, that's complex. Define core services. Within our definition, that's simple.
Yes.
Cultural competency training for city residents. Is that yours too, Carol?
Yes, it's mine, we have cultural competencies, competency training for our police, our fire, our various city staff. As a matter of fact, I think all city staff has gone, or a, a good share of city staff perhaps has gone through that, we've discussed, no? Okay, I know, what do I know?
Some of our city.
Some of our city staff, I think it's so important that we ought to perhaps offer that. We, we'd need some financial assistance to do it, but I'd like to see folks who might be interested in that.
Well, again, it's something, as a city, you could decide you wanna do. Airport strategy, meaning airport self-sufficient. I'm guessing that, that, they go together like that, and is that simple or complex?
Complex.
Complex.
Explore grant opportunities, but grant opportunities for what? Just?
For a myriad of things, that's mine too.
Okay.
I don't think, in my opinion, that this city explores, or is as knowledgeable about grant opportunities from the state and federal levels as we should be, I may be wrong. But I'll be darned if I'm not gonna find out, and, and I'd, and I'd like to, to see what it is, what we need to do.
Okay, so explore the grant opportunities is simple.
Is simple, right.
Writing grant proposals and so forth moves it over to complex, but to find out what it is you might be, you might be able to get should be in the simple category.
Car charging stations.
Increase effectiveness and efficiency with technology. Again, within the terms of our definition, that becomes simple, because you shouldn't need anybody else except city folk to be able to look into that. No?
Yes.
You all have to agree, this is not mine.
Oh, no, I agree.
Yeah, simple.
Okay, I'm just moving these over so I don't get myself confused.
Carol, can we go back for a second?
Absolutely.
That increase of effectiveness and efficiency with technology, to me, is so broad.
It is.
Yeah, I mean, you know, in all departments, one department, you know, by what measure would we know that we can achieve it?
That's, that's a very good point.
I mean, I'm, you know, I'm not doubting that, you know, there's value, but I think it needs to be nailed down.
We don't have to do everything tonight. But you can come back.
Can you star that one?
I can star that one, this one needs more conversation.
Was that yours, Kate?
No.
Who's, is that yours, Dave?
Really?
See, once again, you get a star, Dave.
I'd rather a star than be off the board.
But once again, who challenges?
All right.
You're right, though, you're right, that's it.
So are we, are we okay so far?
Yes.
And remember, we're doing this all in the next 12 to 18 months? Okay.
The ones on the right, right?
Well. What we can do is, after we take the break, we can see if there are things you wanna add for the long term, and then see if you wanna massage it.
I thought, when you asked us to do this, is what can be done in the short term, not what is going to be done, but, you know what I'm saying? So, I mean, that's how we got so many.
Right, what are the things you think you could like to try to do, right?
You're right.
But you may not be able to get all of these things done that are up here in the next 12 months.
No, no.
Not unless you're planning to hire lots more staff, which I don't think you are.
Right.
But what we can, well, we'll, we'll, we'll get to, we'll figure, we'll talk about that after the break. Okay, let's finish this up before we take a break. Economic dev, oh, no, crime, we haven't done crime. Goal setting on reduction of crime, attack crime head-on, be more proactive, reduce, there's nothing here that tells us what we're gonna do.
Cameras installed.
Cameras installed downtown, that's something you could do, right?
That was mine, and we're, and we're working on it. I am, you know, I just, there are some, some folks, this was basically rolled out of Antiglen North, what we wanted to do there, but the idea was, we ought to do something downtown too, as we improve our downtown. I'd like to explore the possibility of putting cameras there too, you know, we talked about cameras in AGN, so.
Can I add the word explore?
Explore, yeah.
Okay. In the sense of our definition of simple and complex, this is simple in that it's got to be done by the city, it doesn't involve other organizations. However, to pretend that it's simple, in the everyday definition of the word simple, would be putting our head in the sand, right?
Right.
And it does involve other organizations.
Right, it does, it could, so I think, basically, this is gonna, aside from the installing cameras, I think this is all complex. And while I would love to see reducing crime by 25%, I think that's wishful thinking.
You know, and, and maybe instead of, again, those are specific to crime, but I think this falls into that arena of public safety.
Sure.
You know what I mean?
And maybe that's.
We're not necessarily always just out fighting criminals, we're making this community a safer place, how do you do that? Lighting, how do you do that? Tree trimming, how do you do that? Cameras.
So should this, should this be public safety instead of crime?
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
I think so, maybe.
I see a lot of heads.
Go ahead.
You'd be right, parking ordinance.
Thank you.
See, Jerry erased it, there's nothing, it's okay.
We are gonna get this huge bill.
RFQ Batman. Bye, bat light.
Okay. All right, economic development. Incentive for downtown business.
Which we have TIF in place.
Have TIF in place, it's pretty much, it's winding down, isn't it?
That's a good point.
Potentially, yeah.
No, this is the simple code. More business thinking by the city.
What does that mean?
That's awfully general.
Right.
I think.
Oh, create a business-friendly municipal code and unified development ordinance. That's.
More definitive.
Can I put those together?
Does that suggest we don't have one now?
I don't know, does it?
I would say so.
Okay.
Third times.
I thought there was something else that was. So I'm wondering, Jerry, or whoever wrote, attack known blight head-on, if that doesn't belong over here in public safety? Is that, or is it economic development?
Could be both, a little bit of both, yeah.
Could be both. Focus on areas outside of downtown, there were a couple of those, weren't there?
Middle right. Up towards the top there, right there where you're at.
But what kind?
Increase efforts to draw business to East and West Lincoln Highway.
And there's another one, right below it now.
Increase business on South Fourth and Lincoln Highway, okay. This is a complex, because obviously, it's not just the city that can control this.
And there's another South Fourth Street one right there.
Right there, yes. Okay. Focus on existing, on supporting existing business. Does that go with this?
That's more retention, but.
Yep, that's there.
This economic development, sure.
Yeah, it is.
Yes.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at these as, as sort of all in the same theme, trend. Investigate potential for downtown hotel.
I'm flustered, well, I get, no, I guess investigating it.
It's still complex.
Yeah.
Market utilize locust and First Street property, can I put that over here? No, over here with these. But that's really, downtown isn't a locust and first, so.
And that's actually a property, do we own that, or there's a park that you own?
We own it.
Right. So that's, could be relatively simple, yeah.
That's where the skating rink.
The old skating rink.
The old skating rink.
Skate there if you want.
Okay, okay, people, truth in advertising, I was part of Main Street DeKalb. We thought that was a really great idea. We were wrong, okay?
It should've been in the complex file, not the simple one, apparently.
Exactly, okay. I was there, when we started with Main Street DeKalb, I was part of that original group, so. Truth in advertising. Mooney building or property reused.
Complex.
Complex.
No, it's simple.
I'm getting myself confused, okay. Pursue development of sports complex and outdoor sports facility. Complex, as is the potential for a downtown hotel.
Yes.
At least, I mean, hey, I like, research the feasibility of a small business development center.
Well, researching it.
Complex.
I think researching it is the simple part, making it come true fruition, whole nother story. Reduce commercial vacancies by 25%.
You get, you're getting into the residential action, or no?
No, not quite.
I'm getting confused, okay.
This line.
I got you.
Got you, got me? I'll get there. So research commercial vacancies is probably complex.
Yes.
Reduce, rather. Use vacant retail space for pop-up stores.
Simple.
Simple?
I wouldn't say so, because you have to have other people involved in that.
You gotta find the pop-up stores.
And have business owners to come in and do that.
Yeah, but that's something that we can work out, rather than, you know, I mean, with the business owners that have vacant property downtown, that we can work with them.
Well, yeah, that means you're gonna have at least three parties, the city, the property owner, and a business who wants to do a pop-up, that makes it pretty complex.
It might be simple to do, but it's.
By our definition, it goes to complex.
Most agencies or people.
This is, I find this one just interesting, identify retail use for at least one building contiguous to the airport.
Yes.
Gotta sign up there ready to advertise.
Conduct feasibility study with NIU re-research.
Ish, brilliant.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, that's complex.
That's complex. Anything you're gonna do with NIU. Grow living wage jobs by 15%.
Simple, right.
Be a good neighborhood.
In a lot of ways.
Complex on this side, simple on the side. Okay.
What are you doing with the tap, knowing blight head-on?
That's halfway between economic.
We only, we had it halfway between, oh, okay, this is, and this one is straddling the line.
Okay, how is this, okay.
I'm gonna put, I will put these up on flip charts to take home with me before we input it all, so when we type it up, it'll make sense, we hope. Okay, residential development. Institute rooming house conversion program, well, that's something the city should be able to do on its own, so by our definition, that makes it simple. Issue permits for two new home builds at $200,000 or more.
It should be simple.
It should be simple, but it is not, right?
Well, it, it is, I mean, we've got it in place. Well, it, it is, I mean, we've got it in place, because actually, we passed, uh, we took off MPA fees for houses, for, and I don't think we're asking too much for two houses.
It's ten.
Oh, it's ten?
Ten, ten.
Yeah, put it on, put it on.
Complex.
Complex.
Study lighting needs a North Fifth Ward.
Simple.
Simple. I think the city could do that.
Residential rehab program. Twenty new house builds.
If ten was complex.
Think outside the box in terms of growth. Okay, so these all go together.
I didn't say they had to be two hundred K.
What do you want, micro homes?
Well, here, there's no, there's no simple over here. It's all complex.
Do my house in the neighborhood?
Doing, dealing with NIU.
Yeah.
What was, what was the, I'm sorry, it's all complex?
That's what I said.
Indeed.
Yes. All right, so now we're into, this is all budget and finance. So let's get these organized and then we'll take a break.
That's all us.
Um, address and implement comprehensive fleet program update. Aging city fleet have a time plan to be back where we were fifteen years ago in terms of roads. These are all simple in the sense that they can be done by the city. Um. Be given more da- data during budget process. Address long-term road funding. Put that back with this one. It's roads.
I think those are all simple, cause they're all gonna be internal budgeting issues.
I'm just, yeah, I think you're right, but let's make sure. These are all budget issues. So in that sense, they're all in the simple category. They should be addressed. They're, they're not simple issues, but they, in terms of our definition of it, something the city can address without outside help. So, okay, it's time for bathroom break, for stretching, for doing whatever you want, and let's come back in ten minutes. Fair enough?
I know what I want.
No.
And then what we're gonna do is redo this, and looking further into the future, so. It should be, my guess is it'll be a shorter list, because you're going to be thinking about things that are really much more difficult to try to do. Am I making any sense here?
You're making perfect, yeah.
Are you, are you serious? Are you humaning me?
No, it's definitely. So what you're gonna do is, after, after you guys.
Yeah, I know that. Yeah, my son pointing right at me.
I just left it right where it was.
How am I doing here? Oh, that's right.
You know, I can ask him even if I saw that.
I might not disagree with you.
Yeah, I know.
What's the thing over in Indiana? David.
What?
There you go. There you go. We need to take these down and put each, each groove on a piece of flip chart paper. Sure. Okay, you've got the picture of the transportation.
Well, that's what happened when you, when citizens united.
Remember that great.
That's it? There are no E's?
Yeah, I'm real, I'll bet the governor shipped him to Illinois. Listen.
Each, each one on a separate sheet. Okay. Yeah, sure, go ahead, absolutely. Illinois City County Management's Association. I enjoyed your, uh, your commentary here.
Well, that's my brother.
Oh, that's your brother?
He writes for Trump every day.
Oh, okay, I thought that was.
He knows, my brother writes, yeah. He writes for Trump every day. I know that he should publish it. He should publish his book.
Yeah, and also book the letter. What did you break in the Constitution today?
I think you should lay up, I'm not trying to support, but I mean, I think you should.
So I gave my brother, I gave him a treaty, a treaty, a board book. Well, what he's doing is, he wants to get, he wants to get in the. My brother to run into Trump every day.
Oh.
So whether it's.
Why not? He doesn't need.
Then whether it's the product, it would just wander the media.
There was some interesting sparring. Well, that's ideas. I pointed out that for an aspect of postal crisis, uh, revenue, losing the evidence has got to be.
Well, yeah, we, just while we're putting them up, and I pulled them up in the room, so that they have.
My neighbor, my neighbor's across the street.
So this is probably safe.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Tuesday, Wednesday night, Paul James.
NIU, it's all complex.
They work all day.
So yeah, this one was economic development? That's economic development.
I have a question. It's a good question.
Okay.
Carol? Excuse me, Drew is the one we hear from the Chronicle ask, are we gonna have pretty much the same kind of thing as in the second block?
Yes, exactly. Exactly. That's, that's, that's.
Well, if you were running for me, that's why I asked you.
Well, I understand, but that, that, I'm done. I'm done.
Something just balance, sorry.
We'll see if we can move on.
Yeah, right, right. As a matter, and Patrick, I'll do this, oh, even so far, as if we wrap up early, which I don't think we're going to, I will run down.
Yes. Right. And they seem to be thinking just.
What do you think so far, Mike? Okay? Is, is it going? Mike, what do you think?
Right.
Satisfied?
We'll see. No, they told us, you can't, doesn't really work, you need one system, so you can't really utilize that.
I know. I like put my hair up.
No, not trying, I gotta. Yeah, I think they're down the other end. Sounds good.
When you're in economic development, you didn't mention the enterprise zone at all. And that's something you already have, which you could be using, and it doesn't require you guys to do anything.
For your perspective, children of the.
And it gives you tax break, building and construction, and the basement automatically that you've already agreed to. So, I mean, throwing in new TIF districts is gonna cost some pain, you guys should look at those.
There are other options.
Yes, that you already have. This is just passing, no, I'm just watching. They didn't mention it twice on the ballot. And the, the states are given, do you sign it? You get like twenty-five years of that.
You know, I need some more snacks.
We got masking tape. Yeah, with our phone system, we didn't actually get.
Are you gonna have to confirm? Yes, I remember.
Like a manual or anything, so. Just kind of winging it a little bit and fixing it up, so.
I must be looking.
Your project's going along pretty good.
It is going very well. We're really excited about it.
Yeah, they're just saying that they don't even have a place on their agenda for public participation.
The minor things that you can get hung up on. What color should the awning on the outside of the administration building be? Should be blue or should it be red?
See, we just built a new clubhouse at the.
Well, I went to the director and she.
That was all the term.
Was it done? Is it done? Well. Having worked with so many city managers for so long, I said to the, to the staff, whatever you want, that's what color I want, because I don't have to be there every day. I'm not getting into that. I can't remember how many meetings I was at where they were tearing my hair out, because they want blue carpeting in this school.
Good. Now, I think, you know, as a result of last week, the last year's show, we oughta, we oughta feel good about it.
Oh, there's Bill.
Cause I think some of the people are gonna wanna come back, like that young boy.
So if Jerry and Bill stop chatting, we could move on, you know, we could get out of here.
I wanted to warm up.
It will.
So I can, so I can walk back downtown again from my house.
So, Bill and Jerry are about done, we could get going.
Sure, I can be.
Sooner we get going, the sooner we can get done, right?
I have them off.
Well, you know what, I'll throw you a pass.
Okay, let's resume the meeting. Let's resume the meeting. Now. What would you like to see before the end of Jerry's term? So I'm thinking of that as the next. It, to me, this is my personal bias, not everyone would agree with me. It doesn't make sense to think much beyond a mayor term, because you got new people and things change. So let's just think about, what do you want done between eighteen months and the end of this council as constituted by Jerry's term as mayor?
We can think financially beyond Jerry's term.
Sure you can. Absolutely, you could think financially beyond, cause you can put things in place.
Right.
That will extend beyond that.
We're doing the post-its again?
Yep, same, same drill. Write them down, slap them up there. You know how to do it now. We're trained.
They could be the same ones.
Yes.
Could be, absolutely could be some of the same ones.
Where are those posted notes? We can just put them back. You gotta rewrite them.
All the difficult ones, slap them right back out there.
Well, why don't we think about it this way? Why don't you just add to what you did before? And we can then just put it as, this is what we need to get done in the next five years, kind of thing. See what I'm saying? If you wanna do that, but we all have to agree.
What's the, um, cause I don't know what it.
Don't worry about the title. Is that what you're worried about?
No, the goal.
It says, what would you like to see?
No, I know. No, I know that, um, what's the good bond rating?
Oh.
Oh, just put it in first round, right there.
Triple A. Is that what it was?
Jerry's term maybe improved two, two steps, maybe?
Yeah, just...
I was trying to think of what the category...
You could do two steps, maybe, in...
I was trying to think, triple A or what it was. Is that what it is? I don't remember. Hmm?
The fuck with that?
I was here for entirely different reasons, after...
I'll be there.
From the library, said they're offering a meeting when ours starts, because they're talking...
I don't mind this much, I'm excited to be there, but...
The property tax.
Yeah.
We're five minutes ahead of schedule.
Nice, write faster, folks.
We're overachievers. I'll type in this.
Harder to get there.
Hmm?
It's harder for me, uh, it's harder for me to do this for some reason.
In some ways, you might have a longer list, but in other ways, you might actually have a shorter list.
Right.
And that's okay.
Is it?
Yes, it's okay. It's okay.
You're okay, Greg.
I could give you a list of people, but...
And trust me, we're not gonna do all those things we put on there for twelve months.
No, but the thing was, it was what can be done.
What's doable, but, and we, then we have to figure out, in the budget process, you're gonna have to monetize some of those things.
Right, I mean, I kinda look at it as, why do these a lot of these land?
Mm-hmm.
So that if you're gone, not gone, drawn, after you're off the council...
You can say, this is what I accomplished.
Yeah. Our help.
Our help is already... Good. I'm eating my... You're like a... Yeah.
What you left for likes.
Well...
Well, usually, you know, I could see that, because, I mean, how many features did you have? Even when you're young. So, I just don't see...
Well, those of you who went through the Calpact, if anybody here who went through the Calpact?
There, I already started dividing out into categories.
Okay.
Okay, I like that one on the end there.
Hey, Mike, we've already done that.
No.
History, history is a real...
Are you serious?
No, I'm talking like...
We have one, it's in cold storage, I'd be happy to make sure to get it for ya.
You know, Bill history repeats itself.
Are you talking indoor?
I'm talking like indoor.
Well, put that up there.
Hey, listen, I owned it, right?
Mm-hmm.
You could, well, sell it cheap.
No. No, thank you.
Oh, what I want, oh, what's that next thing at the... What's that next thing at the airport?
Passenger service.
Passenger service, there you go. And just for yucks.
I'm kind of efficient to you.
Huh?
Oh, look at you, Jerry. You started yesterday.
These aren't any, these are just different, uh...
Some of these are really...
I had five different categories.
It's, it's okay for long-term to have some pipe dreams. It's okay.
Assuming that we were gonna categorize them.
I mean, I don't want people to think I have plans, when I work, it's just something I realize.
A two-hour meeting.
I like that one.
If we could get down to a two-hour meeting, that would be...
That would be great. We did last night.
I know, but that would mean that we were... Whatever.
We had two two-hour meetings.
Yeah, we had two two-hour meetings. Yeah, I'd rather be here than a library board meeting.
Sorry?
I'd rather be here than a library board meeting.
You know, this is a beautiful building, there's nobody...
Oh, it's, it's magnificent.
You know, you know what's fun to see is when you walk out there, just walk out here, then you go upstairs, and see so many families.
Absolutely, oh, yeah. Anytime we're here.
That is, that reminds me of, I came in the... And it reminds me of what, you know, like a touch of what it was.
Right, yeah, that's when we came, we came in sixty-eight also, so, yeah.
That was a good year.
Were you in front of us or behind us when that was?
Uh, all I know is we were coming in, my parents lived on the south side of Chicago. And we were coming from the University of Illinois, and from those days, you just came up from the south. Then we came in from the east on Route thirty-eight, okay? And even then, as we started pulling into the east side of DeKalb, I turned to my husband, I'm a city girl. I turned to my husband and I said, where in the world are you taking me? I mean, it was, do you remember that really dilapidated building that was on the corner of Fourth and Lincoln Highway? It was, oh, it was, the whole, it was awful.
Oh, the electric works. The electric works, just beyond the candlelight.
Was it, was it unmanufactured?
I don't remember, I, you know, I don't, I just remember it was awful. Now, the downtown from Fourth...
Was vibrant at that time.
That was very, and so was every other cities. Part of what we have to remember is some of the problems are not unique to DeKalb. And, you know, there were three women's clothing stores and two men's clothing stores, and a couple of boys' stores and shoe stores and...
Jewelry stores?
Yeah.
I remember when the first time you realized you couldn't, my mom brought this up, where you couldn't, my wife couldn't bring it. Sheets of gold.
Okay, so my line was...
Very Sycamore Road.
No, there was not, before where there was anything else, there was a point where you couldn't do it either downtown or on Sycamore Road. There was nothing.
They hadn't built that.
There was, there was Woolco.
Mm-hmm.
And that was it.
Right.
I remember, well, it was a big deal, Woolco had just opened.
Woolco, yeah.
Jerry, where did you live on the south side?
I lived, I lived on southeast, South Shore.
Okay. Me and I grew up in Bridgeport.
Okay. I remember the first time Jerry came to pick me up or something, he grew up on the northwest side. And I told him, and I said, I'm twenty-four hundred east. And he looked at me, he said, that's the middle of the lake. I said, not on the south side, it's not.
There's a curve there.
Right?
Yeah, the lake goes back in.
The south side, all you white Sox fans.
Yeah, I went to South Shore High School.
So, you, you live in the hills, or you live on Hillcrest, Joe?
No, I live in River Miss, no.
I'm sorry.
As always.
I lived, I lived in Hillcrest for many years. Lived on Sunnymead.
Mm-hmm.
You lived in a rock. Well, I lived on Barb, but before that, I lived, I renovated a house, and it's, it's beautiful now. I mean, it's, it was romantic, it was, it was moved up to Mayflower, and then, then we bought Biskin's house, two blocks.
We live in a bigger house now, just the two of us than we lived in when we were raising our family.
Is that right?
Where on Sunnymead were you?
Uh, nine, nine oh five, right, right up to the bike path there. We had bike path behind us.
Um, I'm trying to think directions there.
So, I'm on the south side of the street.
But you're in the, I'm right up out against the river there.
Right, so it curves, you know, it curves around.
I bought Milk Carlson's old place in eight eighteen.
Who's?
Milk Carlson.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
For like sixty years.
Yeah.
He was like one of the first houses on the block.
Right. Did you buy the lot and the house, or just the house? Oh, okay. Yeah.
He was there in O-Sat for a year, and then I've had his rental.
Yeah, so we live down the block to the east.
Right by Plagacuses, huh, right? Aren't they over there?
Plagacuses are on Hillcrest.
But they're right on the corner, aren't they?
Yeah, they're on the corner of Hillcrest and Sunnymead.
Yeah.
But we can't, we have to go around the bend to get to us. We flooded regularly.
My building has never flooded. Never happened.
The first time it flooded, are we done? I don't wanna tell stories if we're all done.
We are done.
Looks that way.
Then let's, let's get to, oh, so you guys have to work. Go organize them.
Go organize.
Go organize them. The first time we flooded ever, it was sewage. The city was doing something to its water mains. Outside contractor, outside contractor left the manhole covers off, and it rained that night.
I have one, shut off, fellas.
Well, we did after that.
I can shut it down.
But it was unbelievable.
I remember the story.
I mean, and I, I went downstairs, I saw what had happened, I went upstairs, threw up, and left my husband to clean it up.
To charge.
And in those days, he was still doing, well, it was a long time ago, he was doing, um, ecological, he was an ecologist, so he was doing field trips. So, he had hip boots.
Waiters?
So, the next morning, somebody from the city was going around to see who had gotten flooded, and rang our doorbell, and Jerry answered with his waiters on, and the guy looked at him, he said, well, that answers that question.
I'll be right over.
And then if you, Jerry, you know my Jerry.
Yeah.
He wrote a letter to sanitary district.
Yes.
Calculating how many feet of stuff we had in our basement, and said he thought he would charge them X number of dollars for cubic foot. That letter exists somewhere in the files, they won't let me see it.
And as a result of that, you, you wound up on the sanitary board.
Well, that happened a long time later.
I'm amazed at how many people on that side of the street are still there. Some of the original, the bavers are still there. The bavers, they've been there for, I mean, forty-plus years.
Okay, and, and, I can't think of his name, my dumbest.
Tim Dewey is right next door.
Tim Dewey, yeah, right.
But has the house now.
Yeah.
They split up and she took the house.
Oh, really?
They've been divorced for a couple of years. Because I knew their daughter, we're about the same age.
Oh, I didn't know that.
They're, my next door neighbor, I have never met her. I've seen her one time in owning that house for eleven years.
The only reason that I know him is my dad.
I've seen her once outside in eleven years. I've never actually met her. I know she exists, but I've never met her. Crime crime.
That's what it's all about, yeah? So, there are other...
This is all residential. Yeah, we have commercials. Does one go there?
No, that guy. Because this is...
Oh, really? Oh, wow.
And then change the things around.
You know, make a change.
No, I really, I really like this one. I just glad they're good people. And the guy who's missing, just, he told me, hey, just, I wish he were there.
It's like the same person wrote the same one, the reduction.
Carol.
I know I didn't do it, but...
I'm feeling much better.
It does look very similar.
It does, it's scary.
Well, in fact, as we explain...
Maybe that's better than I write. Maybe that's not what I write.
But the difference is...
I don't know. They could have been bleeding through.
That's right.
Because it's not bad in there. That one's definitely mine.
If you... I miss you to get one wants to speak, but she's at the Life Alert meeting. I told her, I said, "Come back a little bit or not, and we'll get you on." So I suspect we probably tell them that hour. I haven't been for four.
Well, we'll see. I think there's a lot less. And some of the... What some of the... It's pie in the sky to think you're gonna do all those things.
Right. Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
But...
What is I told her? I said, "The gift by chance when we get together, I'll run down and never come back."
Well, not so much. Well, we'll get a break.
No. No. I thought we were going to address them, and I'm gonna put that down, actually.
Did you like that? It's not too late. You can put something there.
David? There's one open call.
I can tell you the challenges of that outside the meeting.
This is the one I should have put it up there.
What?
You're bad. You are.
Gotta have some...
Give him a corporate center.
We just gotta have some...
An incubator, if you will.
Some levity.
An incubator.
An incubator.
An incubator. You gotta use the correct buzzwords.
I'm just a smart aleck.
Hey, but that's, you know... Fun being a smart aleck.
All right.
Most of them.
Make sure I pick up the right...
Right marker, yeah.
Not the right marker. Okay. So it looks like this is a dividing line, huh? Review opportunities for contracting and privatization. City budget post TIF. Commit to twenty-year catch-up with streets plan and costs per year to maintain after.
Yes.
Improve streets rating average. Expand grant writing from the city. Bond rating, improve two steps. Reduce outstanding debt. Make more city purchase locally. Medium and long-term fiscal plan. Retax, freeze, lower taxes. Adequate within our means and staff plan and cost. Full funding pension obligations. Attempt to control future pension costs. Develop, launch... You already put it together for me. Develop longer pension catch-up.
We have consensus.
Reducing pension obligations. Routine balanced budget. Balanced long-term budget. Reorganize city operations towards sustainability. Maintain tax... Minimize tax increases. Final plans for relocated slash new city hall. Renovated new city hall. Residency requirements for more city employees. Evaluate city structure organization. Fire police, recommended staffing levels. Two-hour meetings. Reorganize city operations towards sustainability. Minimize tax increases. Okay. I think we've got a couple of different things here that you all put together, but... Anybody... Anybody see what I see?
Well, some are operations, city operations.
Right.
A lot of them are very similar.
Yes, there are. Yes, clearly. I mean, the city budget post TIF.
Some of them are budgeting things also.
Hold the line or lower taxes.
Reduce outstanding debt. Bond rating, improve two steps. This is the streets.
The streets is kind of operational.
This is city hall. Medium and long-term. See? This, I think, is... This is the overarching one. Medium and long-term fiscal plan. That's... That could be the title.
I give another star.
Four.
Don't get greedy.
Don't get cocky either.
But then you've got the staffing levels and city operations and residency requirements. I think that's a... That's a... That's not financial. It's not... It is, but it's not. It's more...
Operation.
Uh, structural. So I think we... I think we should separate those out. Evaluate city structure. Police and fire staffing levels. Reorganize city operations. Tax freeze, lower taxes. That's all goes over here. That's in a category all by itself, I think. Every city council would like to make that happen. I don't know how realistic it really is, just because there's so much that you have to get done. I mean, even... Even the sanitary district. Excuse me. The water reclamation. Not used to the change yet. It's not rolling off my tongue yet. But the point is, we have a much narrower focus in our meetings, no longer than two hours. Okay. Expand grant writing from city. Review opportunities for contracting and privatization. I think that's where I was thinking of putting them with under... With the staffing kind of level. Make more city purchases locally. Yep.
That's operation.
So over here? All right. So this is... I'm gonna... I'm gonna call this fiscal planning. And that's all of this. Then what about this... Does the city hall business belong there or is that separate?
Well, you could put it with the streets part and it's really... Then capital planning.
Ah-ha.
Ah.
Capital planning. Let's do that.
I think Bill gets a star.
You get a star.
At least an honorable mention.
That's my MPA paying off.
Okay, now she's... Now I'm having my...
Capital.
AL, right? Capital planning. This is fiscal planning. And this is governance operations. Okay. Six new downtown restaurants. Ice rink. Indoor hockey rink. New college bar and dance facility. Improve mental health services with more outpatient options. Northwestern partnership for mental health facility for resident requirement. I don't know. Let's see. Let's see what else comes in here before we figure out what to do with those. Be viewed as safe. Reduction in crime. Reduction in crime. Okay. Streetscape program along Lincoln Highway in place. Downtown DeKalb History Museum. Community close to in downtown for active fifty-five and plus.
Put that next to the college bar.
Well, you could, because the fifty-five and plus will use it earlier in the day and then the kids will use it later in the day, so...
That's not necessarily always true.
Um, no empty storefronts downtown. Commit to broader incentive ideas beyond TIF toward redevelopment. SSA sales tax. Plan for South Fourth Street, East West Lincoln Highway, John Street, North Fifth. Redevelop travel insight. Happy with town to start.
You know, the downtown DeKalb History Museum could go into under New College Bar and Dance where it's more of...
Pick facility attractions.
Right. I like that.
My...
And even the... Even the community. Oh, no, that's something different. Increase code compliance to ninety percent across commercial properties. No empty storefronts in downtown DeKalb. All right, so that's all...
You got community development and public safety there, I think.
Right. I think we do. Let's move this over here. Oh, this is... This is all airport.
We did that for you.
Thank you. I'm not happy with the... And I don't know where these go yet either. The mental health services. They don't really belong in those categories yet.
Public safety?
No. Social services. Maybe I have a special one for social.
Let's put this down here for the moment. Ah-ha. Strong self-funded Egyptian Theater. Egyptian Theater is regional arts center. I'm gonna put that over here with these down... With these things. This is all airport. That's good. Reduce chronic truancy in DeKalb. Is that... That's not a city. That's the schools.
It's part... No, it's a city. City and schools and county. It is a complex...
Well, it's definitely complex.
Well, you know, the thing is, now, thinking about it, we do have our police involved in the school district and they do handle truancy.
On a regular basis. Okay.
Why don't we put that under public safety then for now?
Yeah.
Put it under the public. Okay.
That's good.
Good. That's good. That's good. Yeah.
Does our police get involved in the truancy?
Right.
And the county.
This is downtown revitalization?
I... Well, I would just not even put it as downtown. I would put that as community development, possibly. Attractions.
Right. Right. Yes.
Tourist attractions.
Yes, because that's different than downtown revitalization. You're right. Because the ice hockey rink doesn't necessar... Doesn't have to be downtown. Okay.
Yeah, although there is a nice location.
At the old... No, we're not go... We're not going there, okay? Plan for real residential growth. Half... Half the empty lots in Debonair built. Development and Iron Gate. Protono property rehab. Option housing, tiny houses. Plan for AGN.
Any good north.
Any good in the north.
Well, the Protono thing doesn't belong in that housing.
That's on... That's the one out on South Fourth.
South Fourth, yeah.
That is... Really redevelopment.
Right. Put that over with the Parkgate Y stuff right there. The others seem to be more...
Maybe you could put the tiny houses there.
Not until it's been... Only if you got ten people. Not until it's been decontaminated.
From uncontaminated land there.
Be viewed as a place you wanna live.
Tiny glowing houses.
So this is all residential growth. That's what this is. Which is to im...
Yeah.
Improve residential, encourage... What's the word we want for residential growth?
Rooftops.
Foster. Very good. Foster residential growth.
And I think it's positive residential growth. Again, that's important.
And it's important. You're absolutely right.
We could flood our neighborhoods right now with whoever wants to come in. I don't think that that's... Should be the goal of the city. The goal is for quality... Quality.
Quality residential growth. I don't know.
Average household income.
Thank you. By fifteen percent. More than fifteen percent.
Again, that's quality residential growth.
Yeah, we could put it there. Address panhandlers could go with...
Public safety.
Public safety, which we...
To your right a little bit.
Right here.
No.
No.
Over here. One more. Two more.
Two more.
Right there. Okay. This is airport. Okay, we didn't name... This is the...
Attractions.
We were talking tourist attractions, I think.
Attractions, yeah. This is... This is business redevelopment, really. Redevelop travel in. Plan for South Fourth. Commit to broader incentives. No empty storefronts. Increase code compliance. Street... Business redevelopment.
Yeah, right.
That's the airport. This is public safety. All right, what have we got here? Better perception of city to attract more residents. Have city elected staff viewed as competent and effective. Emergency operations center in operation.
Public safety.
And the perception of city could be to foster quality residential growth.
Yes, absolutely. Do you... Does that make sense to the rest of you?
Well...
That or business redevelopment.
Well, yeah, that's... Actually, that's a, you know...
It's an overall one.
It is. I mean, it's something that we all want, obviously. And I don't know where...
This one says specifically to attract more residential. But we all know that the residential and the business are two sides of the same coin. You need more rooftops in order to get more business. You need more choices of business to get more rooftops. It's... One could call it a vicious circle or...
I would say residential on that one, only because be viewed as business friendlies up there as well and it's a perception issue the same way.
Right.
So one could go under residential and one could go under business.
And we've got. Okay. Sell repurpose city owned vacant properties, get back on the tax rolls.
Business redevelopment.
Yep.
Park Eight Eight full.
Business.
Development in Park Eight Eight, South Tollway. Updated UDO municipal code comprehensive plan.
Government operations.
Support existing business. Okay, Protono property rehab. Is that business redevelopment?
Yeah, that goes along with the selling the city's vacant properties, because we own that one too, so.
Okay.
Because yeah, Protono has the zoning.
Right, there are people with commercial businesses.
Correct, right, okay.
Okay, so the mental health ones, I think. In, in some ways, we could put that under public safety.
Yeah, I think so.
In term, in terms of what the city brings to that issue, it would be under public safety.
If he has a chief, he'd say that.
Have city elected staff viewed as competent and effective. And the electric car charging stations installed.
Is that business?
Or attraction.
You know, when I see that stuff, I, the first thing, I think that was the first time I really seen it, and that was at Rupp and Reiford at the mall. And that's the first time I actually seen one in this northern Illinois area, and so it's, is it attraction or business development? I don't know.
Well, let's put it this way, if you have one.
Right.
And people in those type vehicles are gonna be more likely to visit.
Come here, yeah.
Because they know they'll be able to get a charge before they go back.
Right.
I mean, they could have just bought a car with gas and go anywhere they wanted to go.
Well, they could, I'm not saying that.
And to our means, go under government operations. Okay.
That would be an attraction for me.
Well, we see, yeah, eight categories, but fewer, they're all much bigger. However. Full funding of pension obli, okay, so now we need to do the simple and complex business. Routine balance of budget, city budget post TIF, budget planning, folks, that's gotta go on the simple
Yep.
side, even though I know it's really hard, but it goes on the simple side.
And these are things that are gonna be done within the next three and a half, four years.
Yes. Tax freeze, lower taxes, I mean, that's up to you guys, right? Reducing the bond rating and reduce the, okay, bond rating is complex only because you can't do it. But reducing outstanding debt, we can put over here. Pension obligations, folks.
Simple.
Why didn't you do it with the layer in?
I think we need to put that in complex. Okay, so.
I mean theoretically, we.
Theoretically.
By our definition, it's simple.
Okay, so this, that's, and remember, this is the long, the fiscal planning. Okay, capital planning, final plans to relocate, for relocating new city hall, renovated new city hall. Commit to twenty year catch up with street plans, improve streets rating average. This is the same thing, you can't improve the rating average on your own, but in effect, these are quote, simple, because it's things the city should be able to do on its own. When we type this up, we'll put the definitions of simple and complex, so that people who are reading it who weren't here tonight will understand what we're talking about. Government operations, residency requirement for more city employees, evaluate city structure. These are all by their very nature, simple, in our definition. Attractions. Well, they're complex. I was, I kind of think I agree with, with Kate on this, I think by their nature, they're all complex. Whereas these are all simple, these are all complex.
Yeah, I do like six new downtown restaurants because that's a measure. So many of these are just.
Right. And it, well, one of the, one of the things you can do as the budget process moves along is you can put some measures in your budget process, that's the place to actually put them. What you've got here now should serve as a blueprint for you as you go into your budget discussions. If these are the things you wanna do, then you need to figure out, okay, which of these can we actually afford to attempt to, to begin to do? And it goes for, especially for the short term stuff, you're not gonna do all of that stuff.
Well, wouldn't it make the most sense to take a look at, for the short term, one of the simple things?
Sure. You want, but remember, you don't just, you don't do one thing.
You don't operate linear.
You don't, you don't operate linearly. We know what we need, right? We don't, there are multiple things going on at the same time. That's what makes our lives so interesting, right? So, okay, so these are all by their very nature, simple, and these are all by their very nature, complex.
Ah, except.
Except.
Under has city elected staff viewed as competent versus effective, that's something other people are making the evaluation.
Well, that's true, that's true. Yeah, do all these things and then by experiment, sure, this should happen. Okay. Actually, this is right. Okay. Okay, business redevelopment, be viewed as business friendly, same thing, that's other people's views of you. Okay, the pro, this rehabbed and stuff, this should be, should be simple, shouldn't it? What are those two? Protono property rehab.
Protono one, yes.
Repurpose city owned vacant properties.
Yeah, now see though, in that case, like the Protono, because of the remediation that would need to be done, that's gonna be complex. Or just selling the other properties would be relatively simple.
Okay. Got it. Community close to.
Oh, that's complex, that's gonna take a while, that's really pipe dream, but if anyone wants to talk about pipe dreams.
What was that, Kate?
Close to a community, a senior community close into the downtown, I mean, a lot of communities are doing that kind of thing. Developing a fifty-five plus. Unfortunately, we don't have a railroad station that will, so that I could hop on a train and go to Chicago.
But I think we could figure out ways around that.
But, I mean, yeah, but that's what, that's what she's talking about, a community.
Shuttle bus to Elbrun.
No, that's complex, as far as I'm concerned.
But that's part of the transportation thing we talked about earlier.
Right. Increase code compliance across commercial properties, that's something the city can do, if it wants to. No empty storefronts in downtown DeKalb, that's complex. Streetscape program along Lincoln Highway in place. Simple?
Yeah.
Commit to broader incentive ideas beyond TIF toward redevelopment of sales tax. Does that belong over here or over there in business development? Is this a fiscal issue or a business development issue?
Read it again, Carol, please.
Commit to broader incentive ideas beyond TIF toward redevelopment, SSA, sales taxes.
I'm thinking of it as business development.
Yeah, that's what I sound like too, yeah.
Alright, so is that?
Options to TIF, yeah.
So that's simple in its.
Yeah.
Plan for South Fourth, East Lincoln Highway. That's probably complex, it's gonna take.
Been talking about for years.
Right. Redevelop travel insight. Happy with tear down.
Complex, unfortunately.
Yeah, we don't own it.
Park Eight Eight, that's complex. Support existing business should be simple. The airport by its nature here is complex.
Yeah, Carol, there's two parts, two of those should go together though, the section one thirty-nine with the passenger service should be together.
That's what section one thirty-nine.
One thirty-nine allows passenger service at the airport, large, and then what we're allowed to do now. Yeah, those should be together.
Okay. But it's still all complex, yeah, alright. Public safety, be viewed as safe, so we know that's complex. Reduction crime.
Complex.
Yeah.
I think that's complex. Reduce chronic truancy, that's complex, address panhandlers?
Could be, short term.
It's complex in the fact that it involves other agencies and just the city. I heard a presentation from a police officer yesterday, just because there is somebody panhandling, and unless there was an issue for somebody else, it's a First Amendment issue, so it is complex.
Because it's a constitutional right to be able to harass others for money.
Emergency operations center, alright, looks to me like these are all complex.
Well, harass. Correct, yeah, okay. Are, we have aggressive panhandlers that are actively harassing residents regularly.
Then we should not allow.
That is not a First Amendment right to be able to actively harass.
And that we're dealing with, it's when they're not.
But to ask, to walk out in the middle of the street and accost someone for money while they're in their vehicle is not a First Amendment right. I disagree with the police chief on that idea.
Foster quality residential growth. I'm guessing these are all complex as well.
Yes.
So, that's part of why they're long term too, let's be honest. So I'm just gonna make myself a note. These are all complex. These are all, well, no, okay, these are simple, that's complex. This is all simple. Okay, alright. That was my plan for tonight, now, what do you wanna talk, what else do you wanna talk about? This is your chance.
Next steps?
Okay. Well, in terms of what I'm gonna do for you, we'll get all this typed up and organized with the definitions. And then, I thought I would sit down with what I come up with, with Jerry and, and Marie, she needs to see what we've come up with. And then, let Jerry then bring it forward, you probably wanna do some prioritization at some point. I don't think you wanna do that tonight, I think that's more than you wanna chew. I think that's. Okay, I mean, I think your minds start to just kinda close in on themselves at this point, so that's my plan. I'm gonna be real honest with you, the next two weeks are really, really, really busy for me. But I will try to get this to, back to the city just as fast as I can, but think in terms of two weeks to get it to you, okay? Is, is that?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Fair enough, even three would be nice, then LLI would be over.
No, two, yeah, two or three weeks.
Okay.
What, go ahead, what, what I'd like to see is, as a group here, what is there anything that we've missed? Is there, in terms of, in terms of, uh, short term, long term goals? Is there anything that we just have not talked about?
Yeah.
Is there anything that that bounces out at us? Something that we should be talking about? Because this is.
This is the chance to do that.
Well, this is a wonderful opportunity to get together in a, even though it's an open meeting environment, we don't many times have the chance to, to, to talk about this. Yes. I just said yes.
We kind of touched on, um, the social service funding, but I think it, you know, thinking back to the agonies we went over with University Village and the discussions that have come up about, you know, increasing students in the schools and, you know, the poverty rate in the city. We really, other than kind of touching on the mental health issue, we really haven't thought about broader human services needs. You know, it, it's, you know, just a thought, I mean, you know, what, the city has given funding, you know, the extent to that, wish that should continue, at what level, should we look at that differently? You know, are the needs in the city changing? I have a concern that we really don't get input from all of, you know, this, um, the city's residents who may have needs. You know, we've talked about.
We don't get input from what?
We don't necessarily get input from all of the city's sectors that may have needs. You know, for example, we've talked about the difficulties in connecting with the Hispanic community. You know, what, what does that mean? You know, again, I don't, I don't, you know, certainly don't have answers, but I think that may be something that, you know, we should think about a little bit more.
Is there consensus that we need to discuss that more?
Well, I think that, you know, when we get into our budget process a little more detail, I think that's the appropriate time to discuss it. You know, we had some conversations this year, just not about the amounts, but who it was going to.
You're right.
And things like that, and I think we need to broaden that discussion.
And I also take it a step farther that, you know, we, we can't do this alone, obviously. I mean, I. I mean, I was listening to, uh, I was, I think it was a program I was watching that, in the Chicagoland area, that actually, I'm saying that we should maybe work with Northwestern. Some of these hospitals are actually taking a step further on helping out people for homeless, the type of housing. You know, and so obviously, I mean, we don't wanna get, you know, we can work with, you know, I'm thinking of DeKalb Housing Authority, Northwestern, things like that, that we can, and not to be discussed tonight, but just overall, a, uh, a goal, a long-range goal.
Yeah, I think, Pat, the program you're talking about, there are several hospitals now in the Chicago area that are actually paying for housing for homeless individuals. And the impact and effect they hope to have is reduce their medical costs on the same individuals, because now they've got them off the streets, so they're housed, they're not out in Sub-Zero and all that. And several hospitals have done it long enough that they've already decided to double their ante into the program and put more people in. Now, again, though, those are the hospitals doing it, it's not the cities, you know? Do we approach Kishawaki Northwestern to see, could we do something like that? Now, with the homeless in place count coming up, that'll give us a better idea where we might be able to do that.
I think it goes back more to a core services discussion, is that, again, it's, public services are being tackled by multiple different service organizations, both public and private. We have a responsibility on certain products, our work product in the city. And I think that's part of the discussion we have to have. Do we want to be, do we feel that's a core service of the city? Do we feel that's what everyone's tax, that everyone's tax dollars should be being redirected to just small percentages of people in DeKalb? I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if that's our job. I don't know if we have the appropriate staff to tackle those problems and questions.
You're talking about societal things?
Societal ills. We as a city aren't going to solve those issues. We're not going to solve poverty, we're not going to solve.
Gambling.
Inequity, we're not gonna solve substance abuse and things. Those, that's not our responsibility, unfortunately. Well, I think a lot of people look to us as municipality locally. Again, our products are safety and water and public works and roads. Those are our core products, that's what we're selling. And beyond that, I don't know if we have the means to continue to support a lot of those entities going forward. Do I think we can aid in helping them go out and get those funds? Do I think we as a city can help direct information and act as a force multiplier within our means? Absolutely. Do I think that there is merit in doing that? Absolutely there is, if we can afford to do it. And I think that goes back to the core, what our core responsibilities are and what our core products are, to baseline there and build everything else we do, including the budget, off of that.
Excellent. I think what you just hit on are what services should this city take a serious look at with the possibility of reducing service? We're always asked to increase this, increase that, do more of this, do more of that. At what point do we take a step back and say, look, this, these are our core services. I like your idea, but we're gonna be helping, we're gonna be assisting some of the social service communities, and to use them as an example, but do we, is it, is it really a responsibility of the city?
But we've put that responsibility on staff since they've come in.
Does that make sense?
It's always been done, and that's the, the reality the staff came into.
But the city's gotta do it.
It's unfair to question their involvement in it, because it's something we've always done within the city. And, I, again, I don't think it would be up to staff to set that priority, I don't think that's fair to ask of them. It's gotta come from the council.
I, I'd like to.
That's what, yeah, that's what we're hearing.
You know, I don't know, I don't think it's necessarily our responsibility to, to actually run it, implement it, run it. But I think it's our responsibility to bring people in to get something going, like the hospice. I think it's our responsibility, if we see it and we don't do anything about it, then shame on us.
You wanna be brokers.
Yeah, I mean, we wanna, wanna get, you know, bring everybody together.
If I can say something just again from my years of experience, if there is something that you are currently funding that you decide you don't, you can no longer fund, your obligation is to tell people this with enough time so that they can understand what's happening. It's not fair to do it two weeks before the end of the budget year. That's just, that's not fair.
Right.
It is, I mean, in this fiscal environment, it makes sense to talk these things through and decide, what can we fund? What can't we fund? But you need to give the people who you decide not to fund or organizations enough warning that it's not like, oh my God, what do we do now? And they're letting us down and all these awful people. And I think that you made an excellent point, it can't be on the staff's shoulders. It, the council has to take, that's the, it's a policy decision and you have to take responsibility for it.
Another arena here, and Mike just, well, I don't, so I don't, cause I don't wanna lose his thought, but, we have certain, um, I guess, uh, bodies with whom we work very closely. There's a special relationship that I don't fully understand between the DeKalb Public Library and the City of DeKalb. Now, maybe it's simply because I don't understand it or I haven't studied it by now. I, I think there are some scenarios at the airport that we need to discuss. You know, my frustration is looking at the airport and realizing that we have stuff coming into the airport that's going to Sycamore, and we don't get a darn thing from Sycamore. So, you know, how do we start that process, that discussion with some of these other bodies? Does that make sense?
It does, it does, but do we get anything off it indirectly, i.e. fuel?
We may have to cover the operations.
What's that?
No, or not break even at the airport, so.
Right, I think there was something up there about break even, self-sustaining.
Yeah.
Again, the only reliable way to do that right now, to guarantee it, is to have other municipalities support on it.
Absolutely.
Residents in DeKalb are eating the entire cost for Sycamore to turn around and take significant benefit from it.
Right.
That's a problem for us, and we've never been able to have the leverage or force Sycamore into the bargaining table and saying, what are, what are you willing to provide?
Yeah, and I don't think we need to force, I think we need to start.
To bring them to the table.
That conversation. I've already approached that, that's all I can say at this point, but, you know, if I can get a few folks around a table and say, does it make sense? Does it make sense to share in the cost of this, that, or whatever? To me, I think we ought to do it. But, you know, we need the support of the council to do that.
Another.
Or consensus of the council.
Another avenue or area that I don't think we talked about, although we did talk about it somewhat in our budget discussions, was the so-called quality of life issues. You know, it came up in the discussion about, um, the municipal ban. It came up in the discussion about, um, the, um, flower displays downtown, the lights downtown. I don't think, and, you know, the dollars involved are not huge, but I think it's something that we need to think about. I mean, what does quality of life, you know, mean? You know, to what extent would we miss these things? Would our residents miss them? Does that matter to them, you know? At least to be aware of that as an issue, because I think as we move forward in the budget process, we're going to have to make some more hard decisions, and those considerations are gonna have to factor into our decisions.
Yeah, what are those little special things that make quality of life in DeKalb real? You know, I was having coffee on Monday morning, and my guys looked out and the lights on the trees were still there. And the council was making, wouldn't it be nice if we had those white lights on throughout the year? And then somebody asked a question, what happens when the leaves start, when the trees start leafing out? Maybe we can't, couldn't do that. But the point was that this year's Christmas, excuse me, holiday lights were the, were the most attractive. And they were the simplest, weren't they?
Oh, yeah.
I mean.
You could have Bogus Street, like.
God, that is so attractive. So, those, that's, and the flowers in the, in the, in the, uh, summer. I mean, the, the job that Public Works and Judy Schneider and others do is, it's, so those are the little things. And I'm, and I would, I would suggest, too, that a number of the things that we discussed tonight, short and long-term, are quality of life things, you know?
I just wanna say one thing about this meeting here. I got something else out of this, and that was seeing what the older people.
Older men. Older men is a title, council has decided it's our title.
Alright, well, you guys can discuss it later outside in the hallway. But I, I get to see the way that other.
Council members.
Council members, thank you.
Acceptable.
Actually thinking what they're thinking and what their goals are, and what they'd like to see. And, you know, and that, so, I mean, I got something, actually, a lot more out of this meeting than just our goals.
Carol said to me, go ahead and tell her, tell.
That's the whole point. More, more than coming up with specific things, the chance, and that's one of the reasons you take it out of council chambers, is so that you can sit down across the table from each other and play around with some of these ideas. That's the reason you do this.
And she said, she told me that there's been other, at break, that there have been other city councils with which, with whom she's, with which she's worked.
Yeah, let me, let me, one of the things I noticed, I mean, there are other things that I, as a facilitator, notice and wish to share with, well, I'm gonna share it with all of you now, but I've done this exercise in other communities and with other groups. What I noticed was you all got up there together and started moving stuff around and working through it together. I have been in other councils where one or two people would just stay at the table while the others went up there and started futzing around with it. And when they thought they were done, then those people would get up and start changing things around. So they, they, they saw their role as being, um, blowing things up rather than trying to figure something out together.
Instead of working together.
Instead of working together. So I was very impressed. I mean, I know that people have different viewpoints and stuff, that's true on any council, but you worked together as a team tonight, and I think you need to take that with you as a very, as a positive and build on that when you can. Cause that's, it's the only way, I used to tell this anecdote, I remember one, one, one group that I worked with at one time, and there were, went around the table, and this one person said, I am going to accomplish X, and somebody else was gonna accomplish Y. And I said, do you have votes on the council to help you accomplish X? Do you have the votes on the council to help you? And it was like, it had never occurred to them that they were gonna have to get the votes on the council from other people in order to do the things they wanna do. And that's one of the really important things that you get from this kind of stuff. You gotta figure out how to work together. You don't wanna be like Washington DC, okay? We don't wanna be like that, we wanna get things done.
Mike, you had, uh.
Yeah, just to follow up on, with Alderman Noriko's point, I attended our Continuum of Care meeting.
Oh.
And all the agencies were represented, and the leader of the meeting simply asked, what do you all do when you see a homeless person? Very interesting question, and I'm around a table of experts in these fields, and we're all sitting around, kind of looking at one another as to what we should do. To Alderman Noriko's point, I think so much of it is that critical coordination and that message, but also it, those dollars for social services are important. And I think more of what we need is, what are those measures that we have in place? What are the expectations of those funds that we do offer up? And how is that really improving the quality of life for those intended?
Any other comments? Uh, I'd like to move along with item C on our agenda, and that is, public participation, and then we'll wrap it up. Carol, I would like you to stick around for this.
I'll be glad to.
Because there may be some things, Jermaine, that you can add to this. We have two folks who wanna speak tonight, or who have indicated they would like to speak. The first is Bessie Krenopoulos, our former mayor.
Bessie. There are some sheets that are being passed out to you. Uh, I have, those have already been sent to you, and I should see, uh, you could take copies. So, I can, I can email you a copy, uh, that were put together by Bill Feldman. One sharpener, Carol, who had known Bill for a long time. And as we conversed back and forth via email, I added some additional comments, which I also emailed to council. Uh, I have another hard copy of, and primarily we emailed this information to Kate, because Kate is Alderman, I think, because he was involved in that cycle of back and forths as well. Uh, I didn't have time to copy all of that, but I gave it to the nice young lady there, and she promised me that she will see that you all receive a hard copy of that. It's kind of a synopsis of some of the points that Bill was pointing out, very similar to the exercise that you were doing there. Some food for thought in nurturing, which is, I think, the primary intention of what so many of us, who I have worked with over the years here, have tried to relay to council. Because we love this community, as I believe you do, too. And that's the primary motivating force. We have nothing to gain. I could be home beating Pepe right now, you know? But, but we do this because we care and are important, there's too much at stake, too much at stake. The mayor, you nailed it the other day, and I mentioned that in the narrative there, where we need the transparency, we need the accountability and all of those factors that come into this. This was phenomenal today. Carol is unbelievable. We've been through a couple of things like this, she knows how to run these kinds of things, how to get people to engage. And what's come out today is the we factor. Mary, you and I have talked about this often, the we factor, it's not the I, it's the we factor. And as long as you can keep that together, and as long as you realize that you can't do it alone, you can't do it alone, you can't do it, you can't. It's the we factor that will get, get things going. It's, I see some good things happening from this. And I'm hoping, I mean, I will never give up hope, I will never give up hope.
Thank you, Bessie. Also wanting to speak tonight is Misty Hazyshe.
Now, I'm gonna stand up, cause I'm tired of sitting. I sit in enough meetings, I gotta stand for a minute. First of all, before I make the comments that I had prepared, I wanted to give you just a little advice. When I was Chair of Health and Human Services for the county, we had a strategic planning session. Your predecessor mayor was there, I was there, but the most beneficial thing that was there is we had a couple of citizens who were also recipients from the Health Department, from those services. They had, the two people that we had on board time staff had gone through the process, they had been recipients of the services, and then we hired them in, they could walk the rock, they talked the talk, and they're excellent employees. Becky just voted them to some more time on the job and some raises and things, because we need, we need their support. But the two people that really impressed me the most was a Latino couple, man and wife, who had started out needing every service imaginable and had worked their way up. And they were brave enough to come to the meeting, and we could ask them one-on-one, what is it? is it that you need and what is it that we as the citizens can do for you? And that was the most valuable board I sat on for strategic planning. And it's because their involvement. And when you mention you want to get others involved, that's one way of doing it and that is my recommended way, is to talk to the people, get them in here and maybe talk to the Health Department and see if you could do the same thing because some of those people do live in DeKalb and maybe they'd be happy to come to your meeting and explain that I live in the high-rise, this is what somebody told me, and I'll give them transportation. Transportation doesn't run on the weekends. I can't get where I need to go if it's on the weekend. Or the, the road is so bumpy that when the bus drives over and down Wondly, that it ruins the bus. I mean, you got to have their input. And if you need some names, I'll try and help you with that.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, but now back to what I came to talk about. I want to talk for a minute about TIF versus enterprise zone and maybe you know this, maybe you don't, so bear with me so that we're all on the same page. TIF takes the EAV, which is your property taxes, and if you think of it as a line like this, as we're capping it today, any property value that goes up becomes the, the TIF funding. And then that funding is under the control of the city. And so as property values go up, this amount of money, in theory, goes up, right? And that money would have gone to the school district, which gets the largest amount of taxes from our dollars as far as one specific body. It would also have gone to the county. Without that money, then they are forced to raise their rates because their, their expenses still go up. But yet they've given that money to the city and I know it's a city decision, for the first 23 years anyway, that when they extend it, then the, the school district gets to weigh in. But for 23 years, you are hamstringing every mayor, every council member, every school board member to that TIF. And I was Chair of the School District Finance Committee, as life can tell you, for a long And then, so what do you do if you don't do a TIF? You do an enterprise zone. Enterprise zone is something that the state also allows and the county took the ball and ran with it and we have enterprise zones. We have a certain number of square miles that we can use. And one of the requirements that I put on it as a board member is I didn't want to use up all of our, our footage, if you will, because I wanted to be able to add to it. And so they all agreed and we did that. So we have some area of enterprise zone that is not taken up. You can also switch it around, but that's harder to do. What the enterprise zone does, if it's in, something is in the enterprise zone, such as a downtown, then any construction, new or remodeling, gets tax breaks on that construction, the materials and everything that goes with it. The best of my knowledge, I'm giving you the best of my recollection of this. I can give you the details, it's been on the county website for a long time. And what happens is the state then comes in and says, that money that would have gone to a TIF fund now goes back to the school district. You are made whole. So the school district doesn't lose in an enterprise zone. So you could make the downtown an enterprise zone if you wanted to. The one thing you cannot do is have both TIF and enterprise zone at the same time because TIF would then take precedence and there would be no need for the enterprise zone. So that was the first thing that I wanted to talk about because you've been talking about making it a TIF zone. And then on a slightly different note, at a recent Cal meeting, I stood before you and I asked for some information on TIF spending. Specifically, I asked for a listing of TIF spending versus the budget. I talked about street repair in the historic area, which is a TIF district, and to date no one has gotten back to me. So, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Smith, you said that you will not fall on deaf ears, so I'm holding you accountable by coming before you again. And by the way, I like the fact that we're having a meeting that's not on a Monday because I have class. So I wanted to come. Usually, two, two Wednesdays a month I have county board, but not today. So I still don't know my answer, the answers to my questions and I'm asking you, if, if I don't have the answers to how TIF dollars are spent versus the budget, then how can you make good plans for strategic? Because for this past year, and I know maybe a year before that, there was going to be a million dollars out of a TIF spent on roads in the TIF and, I don't know, something like 20,000, I could have the wrong number, but a very small amount of that was actually spent. Who goes back and does the check and balance? If we promise that we're going to spend the budget on this, yes, you can change it. I get that, that is your job, but there should be some accountability to, so the citizens know, well, we spent this amount and here's the reason. But I, I don't have that. Finally, I want to talk to you about fixing the streets, the water pipes, the crumbling bridges and the other infrastructure. It's not sexy and it doesn't pad one's resume, but it's very important. There's a bridge that all the emergency equipment goes right by my house to get to NIU. It's a major thoroughfare there on Lucinda. And when we had the flood back in 2000 and what was it, '03 or something, they were out there on that bridge monitoring it because it was crumbling. That bridge was built in 1954 and they were afraid if we got a second flood, which we were, they told us we were going to get, that bridge would wash away. No one's done anything about that bridge. So when I say crumbling bridges, I do know what I'm talking about because I cross that bridge every single day. The taxpayers, we need streets in good shape so we can get to and from work, so that our emergency responders can get to and from. And I know you talked about sort of wanting to do things with streets and I know it's not going to be a wave of the magic wand, but please do work on that. And if I had to, if I say I'd put streets, infrastructure, bridges way above the city hall. And I know there's, I'm not saying city hall's perfect, I'm not saying that at all, but we need clean drinking water, we need, and so in my opinion, building a city hall is so far down the list when these other things really need to be done for the taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Misty. Appreciate it. Those are the only two folks who have indicated an interest to take part in public participation. Anybody else from the audience? Lynn Fazekas? Yes. If you, you don't have to stand up if you want, can somebody hold the camera while you're speaking?
Standing, standing aside.
I want to point a view shot.
Did you, did I hear that right? Did you talk about homeless people at some point tonight?
You did.
Yes, we did.
I am impressed and I'll tell you what, I, I had gold to another room to try to find naughty people to record because you, you guys nailed it. You nailed it on city operations, you nailed it on budget and finance and you almost got it on economic development. Seriously, this is, this is the best one of these meetings that I've been to and I've been to a few and I think some of you are quite aware that they have upset me very much. This one tonight did not. I will say that what I think is a huge difference is that so much of what you do at public meetings is filtered by staff in some way and sometimes even rebutted. And to have that unfiltered thing, you saw that the process, what it was impressive. And I'd like to see so much more of that because if, one thing that struck me tonight, you were talking about homeless people, is that, that you are going to bridge the gap, frankly, the morality gap between citizens like me and your, your staff. You just are, you're closer to us, you're our representatives and some of you are even getting out into the wards and, and listening to people and I'm seeing a big change. One of the biggest things of the morality gap are the people that you pay attention to versus the people who are ignored. And Misty got into that a little bit. She got into the people, you know, being, being more inclusive and inviting people into the conversation that you have not before. And it includes people that you probably haven't thought of, like volunteers. There are always several very expert people who volunteer their time and I bet none of you even know about this because they don't get anywhere. You all were talking about crime, you were talking about the AGM neighborhood. There, there's a, there's a man who has publicly said on Facebook, who is a nationally recognized security expert, who could go and, and he would lend you expertise for free. How many of you were aware of that? I think zero. The, the warming center idea that I, that I brought up a couple of weeks ago and felt that was improperly rebutted. But, hey, you need somebody to go over to the police station and sit with cold people a few nights during the winter? I will do that and I know other people who will come and who will do that. We've got volunteers. I think Bessie and I had something we were going to do to help the clerical staff reorganize some of these, you know, the immense tsunami of paper that, that we need to sort through and file and all that. No response. So, there's, and it does link into other areas too. So you have, I bet you have the institutional knowledge here that, that you can tap so that you would know that the grants started plunging after the lobbyist was taken away. And that was what, $70,000 a year? And, yeah, they usually went over for the low hanging fruit, you know, you get the, the airport grants are the easiest to get, so they got that. But grants are what built the current Annie Clinton Road and Schnucks and all that and the, you know, that, that marvelous boulevard that we have over there. And, and that was the lobbyist effort. And grant writing, absolutely yes, but maybe also, you know, look at, look at the lobbyist picture as well. And, and so that's, what I would say is to, you know, and if, if there are people who want to volunteer to help you, that, that's marvelous. I, I've been a volunteer coordinator before and, you know, you can't do better than that. And so if, if I want to volunteer, who do I see? Maybe there should be somebody to see and somebody who's going to take care of that. So anyway, again, great, great job, totally enjoyed it. Let's do it again.
Thank you, Lynn. Anybody else care to make any comments from the public? I appreciate your comments, appreciate your participation, I think we all do. Carol, do you have any closing comments?
I think I, I made them. I made them.
Very good. Does anybody have anything else for the good of the cause? If not, I-
Here.
Yes, David?
I just wanted to remind the council that there is, these meetings are mandated in our municipal code quarterly. Now that we've finally gotten to see one, all of this council, I, I hope you appreciate the impact they can make and the things we can get done in a couple hour session. I know the former mayor was, was loathe to follow municipal code because he was one of the dissenting votes against it when it came to the council, but I would hope that we continue these quarterly and branch out into other discussion areas. Again, I know we've brought up several tonight that I think we can put some real in-depth discussion into and get everyone's perspective and point of view. So, again, I would echo Lynn's comments in saying, let's keep these up and let's keep showing up and putting in some real defined and focused discussion on some of the topics that have plagued us for a long time. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Any other comments? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting on the committee of the whole.
So moved. Second.
Then moved in second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
I didn't realize until you said something, Dave, that this is the first of those quarterly meetings. I have stood in front of council, now I can talk and complain. Thank you very much for having the first one.
Finally, in the quarter.